All right, we call to order the January 27th, 2020 Minneapolis City Planning Commission hearing. The time is 4:31. My name is Sam Rockwell. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Brown, Coleman was there, newly sworn in Commissioner Meyer is coming up, Commissioner Sweetsie, Commissioner Lupke-Pier, Commissioner Schrader, Olson, and Kronzer. We welcome Commissioner Meyer from the Park Board for your first City Planning Commission hearing, so welcome. We're thrilled to work with you over the next year. Our first order of business is to review, do we have any items from our committee of the whole meeting? I don't believe we do. I don't see any. No, all right. Okay, we have a acceptance of our minutes from the January 13th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next order of business is to adopt the agenda for today's meeting. We will walk, I will walk through the agenda, and for those of you here, if you wish to testify on an item, please let me know, otherwise we may place it on our consent agenda. This is our first meeting using a new agenda system, and so we have two different numbers depending on where you look for each agenda item. So I will try to be clear on what item we're looking at, but please listen to whatever the actual description of the project is. Our first item is item number four on our agenda, but marked as item number one on the application, which is the Metro Tech Academy K-8 School at 2511 Taylor Street Northeast. Is anyone here to speak on Metro Tech Academy? Seeing no one, we will place that item on consent. Item number five on the agenda, which is item number two on the application, is the Greco application at 907 Sibley Street Northeast in Ward III. Is anybody here to speak on the Greco project? Seeing no one, I will place item number five on consent. The item number six on the agenda, which is item number three on the application, is the Lyft Garage Expansion at 2401 East Lake Street in Ward Nine. Several items there. Is anybody here to speak on the Lyft Garage Expansion? Seeing no one, we'll place item number six on consent. Item number seven, which is item number four on the application, are the Duffy Lofts. That item won't be continued until the February 10th, 2020 City Planning Commission hearing. Item number eight, which is the MPA, which is item number five on the application, is the MPA Energy Pilot Triplex at 1600 Penn Avenue North, which we will discuss. Item number eight. Item number nine is, which is number six on the application, is the Gardens of Bryn Mar at 2800 Wayzata Boulevard North in Ward Seven, we will discuss. Item number nine. And item number 10 is 3115 East 42nd Street in Ward 12. It's marked as item number seven, and we will continue that item to the February 10th So our agenda is amended, is that we'll discuss items number eight and nine. On consent are items number four, five, and six, and we will continue to February 10th, items number seven and 10, and all those numbers are the agenda numbers. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Our next item is to approve the items on the consent agenda, items number four, five, six. I will open the public hearing on the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to speak on items number four, five, or six? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and, and a motion and a second. To approve the consent agenda, Commissioners, all in favor say aye. That motion carries. Could I get a motion to continue items number seven and 10 to the February 10th City Planning Commission meeting? We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. That motion carries. All right, moving on to our discussion items. Item number eight is... Andrew Frans.
Good afternoon, President Rockwell and Commissioners. Before you this afternoon are two land use applications for 1600 Penn Avenue North. This property is a vacant corner lot of just over 6,000 square feet located at the intersection of Penn Avenue North and 16th Avenue North. Property is currently zoned R1A and is located in the corridor four built form district and the urban neighborhood, future land use in Minneapolis 2040. The applicant is proposing to construct a new three-family dwelling with a detached storage structure on the property. Building would be two stories in height and configured as three townhome-style dwelling units. The applicant is seeking a rezoning from the R1A, from the R1A district to the R4 district. The purpose of the rezoning is to take advantage of greater allowances for building bulk in the R4 district. The structure as proposed would exceed both the maximum floor area ratio and maximum lot coverage in the R1A district. The applicant is also seeking a variance to reduce the front yard setback. The property is subject to a front yard setback of approximately 33 feet, which is established by the adjacent property to the north. The applicant is seeking a variance to reduce the setback to 20 feet for the principal structure, and in addition to that, they're seeking to reduce the front yard to 15 feet for an open porch, which does not meet the standards for a permitted obstruction in the zoning code. Open porches of up to eight feet in depth are permitted obstructions in the required front yard, and the applicant has proposed a porch of 10 feet in depth. Letter from the neighborhood organization was received after the publication of the staff report and was included in your packets for today. I'm going to limit my discussion to the findings to where staff and the applicant are in disagreement, namely that's the first finding for the front yard setback variance. Staff agrees with the applicant that practical difficulties do exist in complying with the established front yard setback of 33 feet. The required setback of 33 feet would substantially restrict the buildable area of the property and would make reasonable use of the property for development consistent with the corridor four built form district difficult. Staff is supportive of the request to reduce the front yard setback from 33 feet to 20 feet for the principal structure. Staff does not find, however, that practical difficulties exist in complying with the requirements for open porches as permitted obstructions. Open porches of up to eight feet in depth are permitted obstructions for all residential uses in Minneapolis, and there are no unique conditions to the site that create a practical difficulty in utilizing a porch of eight feet in depth or less. So staff is recommending approval of the requested rezoning to the R4 district, and because practical difficulties do not exist in complying with the standards for an open porch in the front yard, staff is recommending denial of the front yard setback variance and in lieu thereof approval of a variance to reduce the front yard setback from approximately 33 feet to 20 feet for the principal structure only. The result of that recommended action is that the porch would need to be modified to meet the standards for an open porch in the front yard setback. Happy to address any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Kronzer.
So does that mean in effect the front porch goes down to eight feet in depth based from the 10 feet on the plan?
President Rockwell, Commissioner Kronzer, that would be correct. The applicant would not necessarily just have to cut two feet off the porch. They could choose to make the porch wider, and they could choose to make other changes to the design, but in effect, yes, it would decrease the depth of the porch from 10 feet to eight feet.
One other question. If, if the porch were basically within the 20-foot setback, if you, if we were to grant the 20-foot setback, but that porch was eight feet into that 20 feet, would that still meet the intent of this code?
Yes, it would meet the intent and the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lupke-Pier.
Hi, I'm sorry, my button was having issues. So real quick, so if their porch was eight feet deep, it could, it could go eight feet into the front yard setback?
That's correct.
But if their porch is 10 feet deep and only goes five feet into the setback, it's a no-no?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you very much. I'll ask the applicant to step forward, introduce yourself, and add any other pertinent details you think necessary.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Elizabeth Thressel. I'm a senior planner with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, and we agree with the staff recommendation on the rezoning and the variance for the front yard setback of the building, but wanted to provide some context around the porch and the variance needed for the porch. To start, before I get to that, I just wanted to give a high-level overview of our project. This project will provide three deeply affordable units to families making at or below 30% area median income. We chose to use this MPA-owned vacant lot to try out a concept that we've done similarly with the Mini-Haha Townhomes, just on a smaller lot. So the design prioritized allowing each family direct access to the street and to have some privatized outdoor space with these front porches in front of them. We have over 10,000 families on our waiting list with two and three-bedroom units being most in demand, and so we chose to build this three-unit site with two three-bedrooms and one two-bedroom to really meet that demand. So we recognize the zoning code allows for an open front porch that can go into our front yard, that as long as it's six feet, but no more than eight feet. Our proposed porch projects into the required front yard five feet and is 10 feet deep. Two feet might actually feel pretty trivial here, but we do believe that it has a large impact on the families that will be living in this unit, and the reasons are that we want to propose this 10-foot depth porch is, this really is going to be the only privatized outdoor space these families have, and we really want to make something that's going to work for them, allow them space to be on it. The families that occupy our units tend to be larger than the medium family size, so a three-bedroom unit can house up to six people, and so we really wanted to have a larger porch to accommodate the larger families that we tend to serve. And we chose to articulate the facade so it's not flat, really to make the porch a little bit more livable, some increased privacy, and to add visual interest to the home. In addition, we feel the proposed porch is still behind the R4 zoning setback of 15 feet, and we don't believe the porch that it's sized now is going to provide any visual impact to the homes around it, and we feel the porch increases the visual transparency on the corner of the home to allow a little bit more open space than if we just had the corner of the home instead of a porch. And really, our goal with this porch is to provide as much outdoor usable space for the families in, that are living there. And so as you look to your required findings for a variance, we believe that the same practical difficulties exist in complying with the front yard setback as detailed in the staff report, and they also apply to the porch depth. So I just want to close with saying while two feet might seem small here today, we really do believe it's going to have an impact on the lives of the residents living in this property. Thanks.
Very good. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff, Commissioner Lupke, of the applicant, Commissioner Lupke-Pier?
Hi, um, yeah, I was reading through a letter we received today from NERC, and one of their requests was for you to add basements. I don't know, can you elaborate a little bit on the, whether or not it has a basement?
The property, Chair and Commissioner, the property does not have a basement. We chose to do slab-on-grade for cost reasons, as well as often upkeep of basements with water issues and things like that. We just felt like it was better. We do have the storage shed on the back of the property where each will have an individualized storage, and we've tried to maximize storage within the units. There's under staircase storage and things like that.
Did your design team at all take into consideration that this is right on the axis of the major tornado that went through North Minneapolis, and so a basement might be deemed to be a, something that residents would, I get it's an added expense, but you're digging for a frost footing anyway, a few more feet for a basement?
Chair and Commissioner, that's a good point. We did not spend a lot of time during our design discussions talking about the tornado, but we do plan to have space and designate space in there that would be safe for residents during a tornado.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have two applications before us, rezoning and a variance. Commissioner Lupke-Pier.
Yeah, I would like to move staff recommendation on the rezoning to approve the petition to rezonate from R1A to R4.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Cogill?
I mean, sorry.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eathrow.
That motion carries. Commissioner Lupke-Pier.
I mean, I'd like to move to approve the variances to reduce the front yard setback from, for both the house and, and for the porch as proposed by the applicant. All right.
There's a motion and a second, and I'd ask you to speak a little bit to the findings.
Yeah, I would like to speak to this a little bit. I do, actually, I love, I think staff did a thorough analysis of their findings, but I do think that it's a little bit bizarre that as a city we would allow someone to build a porch eight feet into the setback, but if they actually make it sized enough for a table, chairs, and circulation around it for a family, all of a sudden it, it can't go in there. I mean, they're only going in at five feet. We're allowing it eight feet. If it was only eight feet deep, what does it matter how far it goes into the allowable, allowable space that they could build in? As long as it's not going further into the setback, then we would allow any other eight-foot deep porch. I, I find it a little bit of a, of a roundabout, kind of like, I don't know, it doesn't add up in my mind, and I do think there's a practical difficulty when we're asking, and as a city we made a very strong point that we wanted triplexes on lots, and here we have a triplex being developed on a vacant lot in North Minneapolis for families, which is, I think, the biggest need for housing we have right now, is affordable housing for families. And it's true, there's no defensible space unless you kind of outline a personal space for each family, and I think the applicant did a good job of providing both a shared common space, which is just the normal side yard, not really big enough to do much with, and then space that can be kind of owned by each unit, and they define that through the porches. And to almost penalize them for making it a size that a family could actually use when it's not going any farther into the front yard setback than if they had just stuck with eight feet and shoved it farther forward seems a little bit ridiculous. So I think, in my mind, the practical difficulty is just, we're trying to sync stuff up with the 2040 plan, and I don't think that this interpretation necessarily jives with providing that multifamily, truly family experience on what is normally a single-family lot, which ordinarily would have had room for a backyard and room to kind of establish an eating area or entertaining space outdoors, just to get people outdoors, enjoying the community. So I, I think that practical difficulties do exist, partially because of where we're going as a city, and I know we have a lot of things to iron out still in our code, but I think that in and of itself that creates it, and the fact that we aren't furthering what the maximum infringement into the setback would be if they just had a skinnier porch, it, I, I don't find it in any way to be a conflict, so I, I'm moving that way.
Anybody else? So, yes, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. First, I just want to say, you know, I didn't expect to be here today. My term wasn't supposed to start until January 31st. Haven't had my orientation yet, but apparently because of some of the quirks of how we made the vote or something, I'm the official person, so I had to be here. And I, I didn't get a chance to, you know, fully read everything and to get my orientation and all of that, but jumping right into it, I also support this motion because, I guess, I'm going to need to learn more about what the intent of the setback requirement is, but my thought is, you know, we have way too much, you know, lawn space in this city, and I'd like to have more space where people can, can get together, and, and I think porches serve a more valuable function, so I'm inclined to support allowing more porch space. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, are any further comments? Commissioner Lupke-Pier?
I just want to, one more thing, just real quick, we were talking about practical difficulties. I think that if we're talking about what's practical for use of a space, then we need to take that into consideration, and I think it's impractical to have a porch that doesn't fully function as intended.
All right, so if I could summarize a little bit, so 2040 Plan articulates this single-family lot as a corridor four lot, which calls for higher density. We have policy guidance in the 2040 Plan to create space for families and to densify our, our neighborhoods, and this, this porch, because of how the zoning code has not yet caught up to the 2040 Plan, could be allowed at, at a, if further setback, further forward on the lot if, if the building were positioned differently, but, but currently we're not allowing that maximum porch depth because of the conflicts in the code and the 2040 Plan creating practical difficulty to allow for the actual intended policy uses, families' density that the 2040 Plan calls for. Is that a fair summary?
Affordable housing.
And, and affordable, and affordable housing called in 2040 Plan. So with that, any further comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eathrow.
That motion carries. That concludes our business with the MPA Energy Pilot Triplex. Moving on to item number nine, the Gardens of Bryn Mar. Andrew, you are backup.
All right, before you are several applications for 2800 North Wayzata Boulevard. This property is a large parcel of just over 350,000 square feet or a bit over eight acres. The property is currently split-zoned with the western portion of the property, the majority of the property located in the OR2 district, and the eastern portion of the property located in the R1A district. The property is also located in the Shoreland Overlay District. The property includes portions of steep slope along the western property line and at the southwest and southeast corners of the existing office building. The property is currently occupied by a vacant three-story office building and several accessory structures. The applicant is proposing to establish a new planned unit development on the property consisting of the existing office building and two new six-story residential structures, which would have a total of 199 dwelling units. The remainder of the site would be developed with surface parking and amenity space. The project also includes new pedestrian connections between the Mountview Avenue right-of-way at the northeast corner of the site and Wayzata Boulevard to the south and Theodore Wirth Park to the west. The applicant is seeking a rezoning of the eastern portion of the site to the OR2 district to resolve the existing split zoning. The Shoreland Overlay District would be retained. The applicant is seeking several variances. These are to allow development on or within 40 feet of a steep slope in the Shoreland Overlay District and to reduce each of the required setbacks for site improvements. That includes a patio in the west interior side yard setback and asphalt walkways of seven feet in width in the front yard, the rear yard, and in both side yards. The applicant is also, of course, seeking a conditional use permit for the planned unit development with alternatives to allow multiple principal residential structures on a zoning lot, increase maximum height for the two new residential buildings, and to reduce the required off-street loading for the office building. The applicant is also seeking site plan review for the project and preliminary review of the registered land, of a registered land survey for the project. A letter from the neighborhood organization was published with the staff report included in that packet, and a letter from the Park Board was received after that publication and included in your packets today. There are several requests for alternative compliance to the site plan review standards. Those are detailed on pages 30 and 31 of the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of all of the applications with the conditions stated in the staff report, except for the variance to reduce the west interior side yard setback, where staff has recommended denial of the requested variance and approval instead of the variance to reduce the setback just for the proposed walkway. Staff has made this recommendation due to a lack of practical difficulty in locating the proposed patio outside of the required yards. The applicant has indicated that they are amenable to staff's recommended actions, including on that side yard variance. Happy to address any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Is that Commissioner Coleman?
I was wondering if you could go into a little bit about how the plan is protecting the slope. I'm particularly interested in the Shoreland area component of this, and I wasn't quite visualizing what the application is in regards to how they're protecting that slope and ensuring that the slope is not destabilized.
Sure. President Rockwell and Commissioner Coleman, the steep slopes on this property are located at the far western edge of the site. There's a steep slope there that's partially located on the park board property within Theodore Wirth Park and extending onto the site. There might be a, see if I can find, there's a survey, you can see that more clearly here. And then also at both the southwest and southeast corners of the existing building. The, the, the slope currently, to my knowledge, does not have stability issues. The proposed project would regrade a significant portion of the site, would include some retaining walls on the slope on the, on the western end of the site, and would improve stormwater management throughout the site. The applicant, as part of the project, has submitted an erosion control plan for review by Public Works and environmental health with the city to ensure that adequate erosion control measures would be in place during construction.
Thank you. So retaining walls, to me, and slopes, when you need to use a retaining wall, you're encroaching on the slope, and I'm wondering how that has to do with stormwater management? I don't understand the connection between a retaining wall and stormwater control.
Sure. Perhaps the applicant can speak to that more specifically, but today the site does have some, some issues with its drainage. The site sits below the elevation of the adjacent right-of-way, so it, it does not drain out to the right-of-way. It drains partially to a stormwater pond on the property that doesn't have an outlet, and then partially to a wetland on park board property, which also doesn't have an outlet. The applicant can probably speak more specifically to issues with the current drainage situation.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I had some questions about drainage as well, and maybe those are better suited for the applicant, or maybe we simply ask the applicant to touch on drainage in their presentation.
Very good. Please touch on drainage in your presentation. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll ask the applicant to come forward, introduce yourself, and touch on drainage and anything else you wish to talk about.
I'm going to be an engineer, I guess. Mr. President, members of the Commission, good evening. My name is Steve Min with Lupy Development. Delighted to be back here before you on this exciting project. We have been working in the Bryn Mar neighborhood for the better part of two years to come to this conclusion. I think it's fair to say we've, to this date, enjoyed a fair amount of support from the neighborhood group, the council members' office. It is a senior complex. The idea behind the first two phases that we've described to you is, obviously, we're going to keep the office building repopulated as multi-tenant from its original construction as single-tenant. The two buildings that we're proposing to construct to the west, one is a 100% affordable senior, the other is a market-rate senior. The parking to the east, I want to point out, I think we discussed this at committee of the whole, our future plan is for an assisted living facility on that east pad, and that's the agreement we've made with the neighborhood group. So I don't want you to think we're completely wedded to a sea of parking ad infinitum, but for right now, we need to have the parking for the office use, and then when we have underground parking with the assisted living, that eastern pad is our intent. Staff has disclosed, we disclosed that information to staff, and we'll bring that forward as a separate application. Let me preface by saying that the site is a sunken site, the soils are imperfect, they don't bear well, the high water table also makes it challenging to infiltrate stormwater. The entire stormwater system in this neighborhood is at capacity, the Upton system is actually at overcapacity. We had neither the opportunity to infiltrate directly into the soils into the aquifer because of the poor soils and the high water table, nor did we offer to suggest that we would spend the $10 million necessary to upgrade the entire Upton Avenue storm system all the way to Bassett Creek. We declined. We declined that opportunity. So what are the options? The options are that the entire site, and I think I'm going to use your overhead projector because this will be helpful. I'm never good at this, so... This is a stormwater pond to the north of Anwatten School, which the locals refer to as Anwatten Pond. I don't know if that's on a DNR map or not, but that's what everybody locally refers it to. The entire site, our site, most of this portion of Theodore Worth Park and the entire school campus site is a part of a drain shed that goes to that pond. And that pond actually does not have an outlet. Some bright developer enclosed the outlet about 30 or 40 years ago. So right now, we have a large amount of impervious surface on our site that drains over a swale all the way up to this pond. It runs essentially to the northwest of our site, the southwest portion of the school site, and then kind of runs up to this pond. Our solution is currently proposed with stormwater, and I'll get to Commissioner Coleman's comments in a moment. We try to dual-track this to figure out where's the best place to put a pond. We're going to propose a wet pond. And we started talking with the park board staff. They're a little recalcitrant about wanting to use parkland to facilitate private development, so we dual-track this. We started talking with the school board. School board has the exact same problem that we have across the boundary. They have a marshy, swampy, wetland at their southwest corner. And it doesn't work very well, and frankly, their football fields don't drain properly because of this impediment as well. So we have approached the school board, received a letter of intent with them and a memorandum of understanding to create a wet pond that would technically 92% be on their land and 8% be on our lands. And we get to that storm pond, which would be a permanent wet pond of about three to four feet of water depth, by doing a treatment facility on our parcel. So we would have a gravitational system that would produce almost 70% to 80% total dissolved solid removals on our site. We'd be responsible for cleaning that out every year. And then the wet pond would only need maintenance once every 10 years. That would be the outlet for the stormwater. And this would treat our entire eight-plus-acre site and solve a good portion of the problems for the school property as well. So to Commissioner Coleman, to your point, the retaining walls are, this is imperfect, but we really wanted to create some kind of a walking trail system. The neighborhood's priority, when we did a design charrette with them, was to connect the neighborhood to Theodore Worth Park in a meaningful way. So we have proposed as part of our design, not only across the north part of our parcel, a true trail, but we're going to provide the first north-south sidewalks, trails technically, on both the east and west side of our parcel to allow the neighborhood to actually connect in a number of points to Theodore Worth Park. There are volunteer trails in Theodore Worth now. We'll connect to their system this way. And so the retaining walls allow us to get that sidewalk system in without actually draining water on the park board's property. I hope that's responsive.
Commissioner Coleman?
You could just tell me, are the retaining walls on the east or the west side of the walkway?
Great question. Give me a second. I'm pretty sure the walkway is to the east of the retaining wall.
And so the retaining wall is probably from the walkway, elevation, and down?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify. So, Mr. Minn, the onsite treatment mechanism does, in fact, treat all of the stormwater that the site is generating, and then it's simply, it's treated and then goes to the pond, which is partly off-site. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Commissioner Brown, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a system that the watershed district has indicated they would support.
Commissioner Lippke-Pier?
Yeah, hi, Mr. Minn. So, real quick, just two things. One was, just by the beginning of your presentation, you talked about underground parking underneath the future assisted living, but then you also mentioned a high water table. So are there soil borings at the eastern edge of the site that indicate that you still could accomplish underground parking, or how do you plan to balance those two?
Mr. President, Commissioner Lippke-Pier, we have enough depth between high water table and the soils to do one level of parking, which is why on the west, we're doing a single plinth, which is why we have to do both buildings together. To the east, it's a little, there's a little more margin for error, but we were sensitive to the neighbors' concerns. They're all single-family homes with yards that presently back up to this parcel, who have experienced wet seasons on a regular basis. They were concerned that the loss of the pond, which actually doesn't do anything for them, would impair their enjoyment of their property. So we've promised to not push the building to the back. Instead, we're going to have the building to the front, closer to the drive-aland, have more green in the back, so that we can get a little bit of infiltration, which is actually possible on the east, more so than on the west.
And then my second question was, can you talk a little bit more about where the retaining walls are and how tall they are in terms of where on the maps it's... Or maybe somebody else can, one of the...
Well, I brought a number of professionals along with. Let me see if Mr. Scar from our architects has... We didn't bring the engineer today. That was the one profession I left at home. But let's see. Kyle, if I have a chance, do you have that engineering handy? Hate to toss it to you, but I think you're good at this.
So I'm Kyle Scar with Urban Works Architecture. Let's see if we can use the overhead here.
Yeah.
So, let's see here. The retaining walls, I don't think, I'll have to see if I can get the actual datum, but I believe they're only four feet high. And there's a current retaining wall onsite, and the one that goes across this portion is addressing that and improving the current condition. The other ones, which Steve was talking about, over here, let me see here. Seventy-two.
Still have east side, Kyle.
Yeah. Let me see here. Let me see if I can get the blow-up.
I don't need the exact, I mean, if you're like, it's ballpark, four feet, six feet, 10 feet?
No, it's four to five feet is where they were at, yes.
That was my, and then where does it all go in terms of on the site itself? What we get is really tiny, so it's hard to discern what's a couple close top of lines versus retaining wall.
Yeah.
Seven feet tall? Yeah, and so we're looking at a blow-up of one, and it looks like it might be seven feet at the far south, or yeah, southwest corner of your site. Is that, is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, the chunk of retaining wall, the one that wraps around the building, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah. That is this chunk right here.
Okay, so that is seven feet. So the people on the sidewalk are up against, are walking next to a seven-foot wall, a retaining wall block?
They're above it.
Oh, they're, okay, so then it's retaining wall down to the building?
And it's sloping down, so it keeps at a complete accessible slope for the walk.
Okay, and then the retaining wall goes where and ends where and starts again, and what do you do?
It starts and stops right there.
Okay, and then elsewhere on the site? I'm just, I just want to make sure of a complete understanding where the retaining walls are.
Yeah. And then I believe, I believe that's that one, then there's one here?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
That holds the edge of the existing building. It replaces an existing wall.
Yep, and then this is another one here, which is a similar condition of upholding the existing grades against the building.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Coleman. And then, or yes, and then Commissioner Meyer.
If you could leave that up there. Now I have a concern about stormwater, since there is stormwater, you are below the roadway, then there's stormwater coming from the roadway onto your site, I assume?
No.
No.
There's a storm system in Wayzata Boulevard that is existing that rolls. We were not allowed to go into that system, Commissioner Coleman, because it's in the MinDOT right-of-way, so there's a prohibition on our doing that.
So there is no stormwater runoff coming onto your property from Wayzata Boulevard?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meyer?
Commissioner Cogill asked me to just confirm.
Make sure your mic's on.
Yeah. President Cogill asked me to just confirm, so you will not be storing stormwater on the parkland in this current iteration of the plan? Is that correct?
I'm not proposing a wet pan, a wet pond on park board property.
Okay. Second question, could you speak to, I'm just reading through these now, since I didn't have a chance to before the meeting, but item D, and the staff recommend denying the variance for the west interior side yard setback. Could you speak to your view on that?
Mr. President, Commissioner Meyer, we are supportive of the staff alternate being proposed under the denial.
Okay.
We'll move the patio. It's not a problem.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer?
In the letter we received from the park board, it mentions that the trails proposed on this plan do not meet the master plan for Theodore Worth Park. It appears that these trails are largely on park board property anyway. Can you describe how this plan will change to satisfy the park board?
Mr. President, Commissioner Kronzer, I haven't seen the park board's letter, so I can't speak to it in its entirety. Your recitation in abstract form, I'm going to take a guess at. Theodore Worth Park is full of asphalt paths. We were trying to mirror that. We asked for the variance because we thought concrete not only was as expensive, but it looked more foreboding and didn't fit in with the feel of the trail system that was nearby. That was our intent, was to make it feel like the park system, and we actually wanted to dedicate the north path to the public right-of-way. I'm going to guess if it's seven feet width instead of six feet width, and they want us to conform that we would, we want it to look seamless, but I don't want it to be a concrete sidewalk. That's our, our objective was to not be a concrete sidewalk. They don't have that. Further, I'd have to have the letter in front of me to give you a more detailed response.
That's all it says. So you're referring to the straight walkway that runs north-south that's on park board property to the west of this project?
Mr. President, Commissioner Kronzer, I want to put this, I want to put the landscape plan in front of you, so we're speaking specifically about what my proposal is. Actually, you have it, site?
Yeah. Site, full one. It's right there.
Mr. President, Commissioner Kronzer, this pathway along the north edge of the property is on my property.
Correct.
And where the park board and I agree to a connection, we have not discussed with the park board, but our vision is to connect to their trail system. There are already volunteer paths in that corner. These paths in this area here, this is actually MinDOT property that we were, I'm sorry. That'll go away. This area down here is actually MinDOT property. You'll see this is actually the property line that comes across. We're talking with MinDOT about getting this property from them or have any easement so that we can make it look a little better than the large berm they've placed there. But this is the sidewalk that's the formal concrete sidewalk plan, and these areas would be concrete here. These paths that we're proposing here would be a part of the asphalt scheme.
All right, so that straight north-south walk on the west side, which is on park board property, is also up for debate with the park board. The one, you go from the fire pit, you go up the stairs, and you run perpendicular into a path? That was my original question. That one, yeah.
That's, this is a pathway connection that we're proposing to put on what's currently xerxes on paper.
Okay.
And it functions like a volunteer path, and we're proposing, if they will accept it, that we make it a more formal path for them. But I'm okay leaving it the way it is. It functions like a 12-foot paper street right now.
You're proposing, you're proposing to build that with the project?
Yes.
Okay. Final question, you mentioned a swale that runs up to the wet pond, Anwatten Pond. Is there an easement that allows water to go from this property up to that pond?
Mr. President, Commissioner Kronzer, all the water here predates most of the formal easement process that we're accustomed to today. And in fact, what looks like a utility easement is just paper xerxes that's never been deeded. So even the utility poles, which have been there 100 years, are there because they predate the park. So all this water flows before the park was formalized and before the easements for utilities were created and before the school was completed. So rather, we went back through the title records almost 140 years, and it's, it needs some fixing. I'll try to fix it. I'm trying.
Commissioners, any further questions of the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to testify on this item today? Last call, yes, come on forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Rod Miller. I live in the Bryn Mawr neighborhood, and I am affected by the project, and some of my neighbors are here that live on Upton. And we just want to say that Steve has been very forthcoming, has been very transparent. He's come before the neighborhood. He's held public hearings or public discussion, and he's accepted a number of our needs into the plan. The access to the park, for instance, that he just talked about, the pathways. He's also talked, he's also considered many of the issues regarding the water runoff and the basements that have water in the basement. So we have to say that Steve has been very open to suggestions. He's not been defensive. He's been very transparent. And all the things he said about approaching the neighborhood, he has done. I also serve on the board of the Neighborhood Association and was in favor of the letter that we sent to support this, and I just want to reiterate that we're behind this, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else here to speak on this item today? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a number of applications before us. Is there any further discussion, questions, or would somebody like to start us off with Commissioner Coleman?
I would like to move item A, the rezoning, to approve as staff recommended.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning, item A. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Commissioner Coleman?
I would like to move the approval of the conditional use permit for the PUD in item B with the two conditions as stated in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B consistent with staff recommendations. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Commissioner Coleman?
I would like to move items C, D, E, F, and G, the variances, as, as in the staff report, do I, can I group them even if there's a denial?
Yes.
Okay. As stated in the staff report, approving all of them except for D, with the in lieu of variance in item D.
Very good.
Point of clarification, so it's moving also to approve the in lieu of variance or denial.
Moving items C, D, E, F, and G consistent with staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Commissioner Coleman?
I would like to move item H, site plan approval, with, to approve and with the conditions, eight stated conditions in the staff report.
Very good. We have a motion to approve site plan consistent with staff recommendations with all...
Second.
And a second with all eight stated conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
Commissioner Coleman.
I would like to make a motion to approve item I, the preliminary registered land survey, with the two conditions as stated in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second to approve item I, the registered land survey. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
I feel like I forgot somebody.
You forgot me.
Oh, Coleman, sorry.
Aye.
Eight-zero.
All right, that, all of those motions carry, and with that, we conclude our business with item number nine. And all of our public hearing items, Kimberly, are there any staff reports?
Yes, I was just noticing on our new LIMs agenda that we lost our updates and communications portion at the bottom.
I also know of that, I've got a little carrot here.
Yes, we'll make sure that we get that back, but we do have a series of resolutions of appreciation here for our departing commissioners. I don't know if you would like to do the honors of reading them, or...
Sure.
Like me to do it, but...
All right. Resolution of appreciation for Matt Brown, first dedicated service to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. Whereas Matt has served on the City of Minneapolis City Planning Commission since 2013, and whereas Matt served on the commission's executive committee as vice president from 2014 to 15, and chaired the commission's committee of the whole meetings, and served on the commission's executive committee as president from 2015 to 2019, and whereas Matt has participated in over 145 planning commission public hearings, impressive, making decisions and recommendations on over 2,830 land use applications, and adoption of numerous small area plans, policy plans, and zoning code text amendments, and whereas Matt has provided substantial expertise related to planning and development, landscape architecture, urban design, and environmental issues, and whereas Matt has demonstrated tremendous dedication and generosity in sharing both his time and knowledge, and whereas the Minneapolis City Planning Commission wishes to formally recognize Matt's dedicated service to the city planning commission and the city, now therefore be it resolved by the city planning commission and the staff to the city planning commission of this city of Minneapolis, that we thank Matt for his faithful and constructive service in expanding the progress of this city and in promoting the welfare of its people, that we extend to him our best wishes for good health and happiness, trusting that the friendships and understanding built in our mutual undertakings will be with us always. Thank you, Matt. And I will add, you know, Matt was president of the planning commission when I joined and helped me get situated, and was president of the planning commission and guided us all through the 2040 plan process, which Matt took seriously and showed up at so many of the public events that were, were above and beyond the 2,000 and change. You'd lose count after 2,000 land use, individual land use applications, and so I, you know, his service has been not just great, but, but really has guided the city through some of the most, I think, important conversations that, that we've had in the city. So, Matt, thank you for that.
I also have one here for John O. Cogill, who was planning on being here tonight, and then due to just kind of a last minute, let's call it a misunderstanding with the park board appointment process, we did a last minute switch, and Chris Meyer started tonight, so John was not here to read this resolution, but we thank Chris for his flexibility in arriving with about an hour's notice and getting sworn in. But, I don't know if you want to read the whole thing or an abridged version since John was not here, but he was planning to be here.
I can read it. An abridged version, John was participated in 46 planning commission public hearings as park board appointee, making decisions and recommendations on 1,121 land use applications, and numerous small area plans, policy plans, zoning code text amendments, and we thank John for his faithful and constructive service in extending the progress of the city, promoting the welfare of its people, and extend our best wishes to John. We'll make sure this gets to him.
And we have one final one for Kim Ellison, who is being replaced by Kimberly Caprini as our school board rep, and Kimberly will start next meeting, the February 10th meeting, I believe.
And Kim has participated in 46 planning commission public hearings, making decisions and recommendations on 1,121 land use applications and adoption of numerous small area plans, policy plans, and zoning code text amendments, and has lent her expertise to all of our hearings and her perspective. We thank Kim for her faithful and constructive service in extending the progress of this city and in promoting the welfare of its people. And with that, I want to allow other commissioners to speak, including Matt, who was here as well. So, Matt, I'll let you speak, and anyone else can speak after that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just, just a few comments. Certainly, it was a lot of fun and quite an honor to serve the city during a period of really unprecedented growth over the last seven years. I will apologize for the four years that I chaired the commission and, and all of the times I kept you from your families and other more fun activities in the evening, but hopefully we had some good discussion and I think reached some decisions that will really affect the city for, for years to come. You know, I've always tried to approach this position as, as being very objective and thoughtful, and, you know, even though I might have opinions about things, I really do my best to, to keep my decisions, my motions within the policy framework we have, and I know the rest of the commission does as well, even though I know sometimes to the public or to applicants it might not appear that way. I think everyone does a really good job of that. We all bring really different perspectives, and, and I appreciate that. I appreciate occasional disagreements and, and really think that's great. I especially wanted to thank the staff. I know, again, during a period of unprecedented growth, it has not been an easy job. Certainly, our current planning staff has, really goes above and beyond, provides an exceptional level of information and analysis in the staff report, I think, for members of the public. They can really see all of the details and why we're reaching the decisions we are, so I've, I've always appreciated that. The long-range planning staff, I just have to say, during the 2040 planning process, the amount of outreach, their engagement of communities and individuals in the city who might not otherwise be motivated to be engaged in city government was very impressive, and I think really different from other processes we've experienced in, in Minneapolis. And also, our new code development staff, you know, sometimes I, I will give this commission and, and city government in general a lot of credit for taking on some bold policies over the last several years, and I know sometimes it, it seems like we can just flip a switch and implement that, but in reality, it's a lot more complicated than that, and I know our staff has really done a lot of research and really seeks out potential negative consequences of, of those decisions, and I think has done a good job of coming up with policies that will implement what, what we want to implement. So, I will say, you know, I'm, I'm really proud to live in Minneapolis. I think we have a good city. While our city and region have some pretty significant challenges, I'm very optimistic. I think 20 years from now, we'll have an even better city to live in for all of us, and I would certainly hope to attribute a lot of that change to city government. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Kronzer?
I just want to say one thing to Matt. Matt stepped up to lead this body as president when really nobody else wanted to, and I don't think he had a clue of what he was stepping into at the time, but Matt, you did a great job, and I very much have learned a lot from your leadership and your professionalism, and you're always there to summarize a finding like I don't think anyone else will ever do again. But, thank you very much, and I'll miss spending some time with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lippke-Pier.
Yeah, Matt, I, I too have to say, I, it's funny, I don't think of myself as being out here that long, and so I think of you as being just a new person like me. So, Commissioner Kronzer is correct. When everyone was reluctant to take the wheel, you stepped right in and assumed a really reassuring, consistent leadership that I think we all relied upon. I know I did, for, for being the voice of calm reason during sometimes really heated discussions, even when the person at the microphone clearly wasn't happy with what was going on in front of them. So, I just want to say thanks for your steady influence on this body and your planning knowledge, and that I know I will be missing, missing your presence here on this commission.
Commissioner Coleman.
I just want to say, Matt, the reason I'm on this commission is because of knowing you, and I knew you outside of the commission and said, oh, you look like you're having fun, and said, yeah, get me some of that, too. And now, I've spent two years with you here, and indeed, you do make it look easy. Your poise and your articulation is always spot-on, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure you're going to go out and have fun doing other things. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will just note that Commissioner Kronzer has agreed to join us for one more meeting as we get through the appointment process here, so you can all bring nice things to say about him on February 10th. We'll have a resolution then, too.
Very good. With that, unless there are any other updates or communications, the meeting is adjourned.